I would like to call the special meeting of the city council to order. City Clerk, Roll Call, please.
Councilmember Mora. Jeff, was he moved successfully?
I, I hit the button. He hasn't moved already yet, though.
Okay, since I see him logged in, I will.
I will check with them if he's having some problems, so I'll, I'll contact them.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Sarno.
Hi, Mayor.
Councilmember Trujillo.
Here.
Mayor Prochamps Zamora.
Here.
Mayor Rodriguez.
Here.
Okay, should I continue, Janet?
Yes.
Or, okay, you're not going to wait for John?
I marked him as president.
Just give me one second. Mayor, give me one second, see if I can get him, see what's going on. Thank you.
According to my screen, he's now panelist.
I see him. Okay. Hi, John. Okay, let's go. Public comments are now open. Anyone joining us through Zoom can use the raise hand function if you wish to make a public comment on any item on the agenda. The city clerk will see if you have raised your hand through the Zoom application. You have three minutes to speak. City Clerk, do we have any members of the public present that wish to speak today?
Madam Mayor, we have one speaker, Moshe. Actually, two speakers. We have Moshe and Lang.
Okay, are they on?
Yes, we'll start with Moshe, since Moshe was the first person to have their hammer raised.
Go ahead, Moshe.
Hi, so, hello, everybody. First, thank you very much for the opportunity to address you, and I really have two issues to raise or two questions. We, of course, have sent a letter to the city regarding the general plan. The first point that I would like to make is really about the process. I understand that the city has a deadline for the housing element because it has to meet state law. Otherwise, it has to, instead of updating the housing element every eight years, has to do it every four years, and I appreciate that. However, what I would ask each of the city council members to think about is that meeting the deadline for the housing element doesn't necessarily require the kind of general plan amendment that is so far-reaching and so wide-reaching at the same time. So, given that the general plan amendment has such implications and has to have thought given to the citizens on landowners and on land use, I would just ask the city council to think about slowing down that process to give all of us the opportunity to engage in a collaborative effort, understand, and think about the process. I want to tell you that we've had somebody who's been part of the committee throughout this process, and they really did not get a chance to know what the city was thinking about on things other than the housing element until the city published the general plan draft. So that's one point that I would like you to consider. The second is, when it comes to one of our properties at Freeway Springs, it's unclear to us whether the impact of what the city is considering doing will result in the building that we built. We spent tens of millions of dollars building a facility with the city's consent and encouragement. And the question that we have is, if we have a CUP that is in effect, if we have a new tenant that comes in, does that mean that we no longer are grandfathered in the use? And that seems to be a very difficult position to be put into, especially when you're doing it very rapidly. And those are really the two points that I would like you to consider in addition to those things that we made available to you in the letter that we submitted. I appreciate the time. Thank you very much, everybody.
Thank you, Moshe. Is there anybody else, Janet?
Madam Mayor, we have two more speakers. Next, we have Lang Cutrell.
Hi, Lang, are you on?
Can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Yeah, okay, yeah, this is Lang Cutrell with Goodman. Thanks again for the opportunity to address you. Appreciate the time. A few weeks ago, I was in front of you as well, talking about our concerns around the general plan. Similar to Moshe, as Moshe said, we've also submitted a letter with some, expressing some of those concerns to, to the council as well as the city manager and staff. But I think more importantly, I, I think that, you know, one of our projects, as we've talked about, is probably the largest project that's impacted by the proposed general plan. We feel that the proposed rezoning of over 60% of the site at the old Vaughn site is far-reaching to take away industrial zoning and making it, make it a business park zoning. So we, we just questioned the logic of that for a number of reasons. One, it's currently occupied and functioning just like it had for 50 years as a distribution center. Some, some folks have said that the use has become greater than and is much more dense than it used to be under Vaughn's. I believe that our traffic study that we did before they, they occupied showed that they'd actually be using and generating less traffic on the site. Some of those complaints may be a result of the neighboring cities and some of the changes that are going on in, within those cities. As I understand it, Serritos has implemented changes and restrictions along Bloomfield, which has changed the traffic patterns and affected Norwalk, and Norwalk is looking for relief. But at the end of the day, it's not due to, to the, to the use. I'd also, we also think that it's very important for the city to, and to understand the potential economic impacts of this decision. To that extent, we have engaged a third-party consultant and are very close to, to having a final report that we will present to you. But the initial preliminary analysis shows that a comparison of a redevelopment of an industrial site, a project on the site compared to the proposed project will, will result in a, basically a loss of almost 50% of potential revenues over the next 20 years. So we'll, we'll share that with you, but it's a, it's a huge consideration because it's a, it's a very large numbers, millions of dollars. And we think that that's something that's important to, to, for the city to consider. And finally, we just think that it's not needed, because as industrial zoning, should we ever come in and, and ask for a redevelopment, we would have, the city has discretionary approval to review site plans, approve site plans, approve, and put certain mitigations and, and restrict sizes of buildings. So I think bottom line is, there's a huge impact to the city and the residents of the city if they make that decision, and it's not needed. So we, we appreciate the time. Thanks.
Thank you, Lang.
Madam Mayor, we have one more. Jeff Hamilton.
Thank you. Jeff, are you there?
Yeah, can you guys hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Fantastic. Thanks, Madam Mayor. I, I don't, similar to what Lang said, I'm Jeff Hamilton. I'm with Goodman. I, I've addressed this council, I think, similarly to Lang a couple, couple of weeks ago. I, I don't want to repeat too much of what Lang said, and I'm happy to sort of save my comments till after the presentation, but just, just one final note is that, you know, similar to what Lang said, we have the ability to, to, to review all of this later in time. So, so what my goal is, if you guys need to, to pass this housing element in, you know, in the next month or two months, you know, why don't we focus on the housing element and just put the, the industrial component to the back burner and, and try and delay or, or, you know, push this down the road? Because, you know, similar to what Moshe said and Lang has said, I, I don't know that, that the industrial team has been engaged enough and given the opportunity to, you know, provide comment and provide feedback. And, and as we know, the industrial group is, is really the heart of the city and, and the backbone of, of the economic component. So, again, if I, if I had the opportunity to, to be able to speak after the, the presentation, that'd be great, but just, just food for thought, if you would. So thanks for your time.
Madam Mayor, this is Ray.
Hi, Ray.
Hi, I just wanted to make sure through the process here, so we had a meeting earlier on a couple topics with the, this, this sector's representatives, and there probably is a thought that there's an ability to, again, to speak publicly after the presentation. I just want to make sure that's, that's the case to the city clerk, city attorney, that they can speak after the public comment. Is there a second shot at that or first shot for people that haven't spoke yet?
Madam Mayor and Mr. City Manager, this is only, the only time that the public may make comments on the item on the agenda.
So I wanted to make sure that people who are watching then, if they had a desire to publicly speak, they should do it now, or, or listening in. So, so I just wanted to make sure that they didn't get their, missed their opportunity. So if there's someone out there who wants to speak, they need to do it now. I mean, they can raise their hand, so we'll give you a few seconds here to make it known that you want to, to speak. If you were waiting at the end, there's not going to be that opportunity.
Madam Mayor, we have one more speaker, Steve Mazurah.
Steve, okay, are you there, Steve?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, thank you.
Hi, everybody. I'm Steve Mazurah. I'm, I'm the Director of Autonomance for Rexford Industrial. And some of you probably know my name because I used to work for Santa Fe Springs as the redevelopment manager back in the 2000s, way back when. Anyway, yeah, I just want to echo what Moshe, Lang, and Jeff have said. Rexford has a very large footprint in Santa Fe Springs with 15 properties and primarily industrial properties. And so, want to echo their comments that we have definite concerns about the general plan. And zoning changes that will affect some of our properties, not all of them, because some of them are staying in too, but a good number of them will, will be changing. And we're always looking at properties, and we've had a conversation with city manager and staff on some other properties we're looking at in the freeway commercial zone, so we echo all those things. And we appreciated Ray's in staff meeting with us as stakeholders to discuss our issues. So he's, I think, got a pretty good understanding of where we're coming from. And as we go forward on all this, that we can have further discussion and that those issues can be a little more front and center with the council. And the consultants and staff were there at the meeting, so they're, they also understand our concerns in, in particular regarding the freeway commercial. We understand there's, if there's near residential, there might be some environmental justice issues that have to be, we don't want to ignore. But Lang has indicated there might be some other information and studies that might change, change the direction of that. If, if you, if you were to take those into accounts, some of the impacts may not be as bad as some people are saying they are. So those should be clearly utilized and looked at overall in this process, hopefully, and brought up in the public, you know, public, public forum and in the, in the analysis. And then, just also, I would just reiterate, one of the points that we brought up earlier in our meeting was the market right now for commercial and office and hotel just doesn't seem like it would bear out on, on the freeway in Santa Fe Springs. And so it's not necessarily going to be a very high economic value to the city, in our opinion. So I just want to share that. So I appreciate your time. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else?
Madam Mayor, I don't see any additional speakers.
Okay, I will now close public comment. And moving right on to the study session, item number four, the general plan update presentation. Would like to call on Wayne Morrell.
Yes, thank you.
Director of Planning, sorry about that.
Oh, no, sorry. I, I spoke too soon. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Mayor. I would like to call upon our housing consultant, Jose Rodriguez from MIG. And Mr. Rodriguez will give the presentation today. Thank you.
Great, thanks. Thanks, Wayne. Hello, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. My name's Jose Rodriguez with MIG, and we're assisting the city of Santa Fe Springs in updating the general plan. May I ask a technology service to allow me to share my screen? Sorry, it's so, it shows that I cannot share my screen at the moment.
Yeah, hold on, I gotta find you on the, on the panelists.
Great, thank you.
Jose, is your screen different from that, that slide that's up there right now, since the city council study session? Is that, is that your slide or is it someone else's?
Oh, that, that is the, that's the screen, yep. Why don't we use that one?
I, I was giving your presentation by planning.
Got it. Okay, that's the same presentation. I wasn't sure if I was going to present it or you can present it. So I'll ask you to, or whoever's advancing the slides, to please advance the slide.
I, I can take care of that for you.
Excellent. All right. Well, thank, thank you, everyone, and thank you, Mayor. Well, let's start the presentation. Let's go to the next slide. This is the agenda for this study session. I want to briefly go over the general plan process. As you recall, I've given, I've given this presentation several times now to the city council, but we definitely want to talk about the general plan process, particularly those that haven't been in the previous presentations. I also want to talk about one of the key drivers to the general plan and the land use plan is the housing element and some of the state requirements. We'll talk about the draft land use plan. If some, some council members might recall, this was brought forward a little over a year ago. But we do want to recognize some of the comments and concerns that have been raised over the last several months. So we'll definitely talk about some of those land use changes. I don't, I'll then go ahead and move on to the next steps, you know, what are the next steps after this meeting? And then we'll definitely open it up to question and comments for the city council. Next slide, please. Next slide. So the general plan process. Real briefly, we started back in March of 2020, so a little over, or I think we're approaching now, two years and a couple of months. Community engagement also started in early April, in early 2020. And I'll go through what the engagement included. We did an existing background report. We talked about setting up a draft vision and guiding principles for the general plan. This was done in October of 2020. Those were shared with the city council to affirm both the, the vision, the guiding principles, and the draft land use plan in December of 2020. So that's now, yep, about a little, that was about a year ago. Next slide, please. General plan engagement. We've done literally many facets of community engagement through the website. We did, we use social media. Materials were in different languages, particularly in Spanish. We had banners, newspaper publications. We, we also inserted materials in the utility bill. Back in the early 2020, we did interviews and focus groups. We did interview city council and planning commissioners in various groups. We did have a general plan advisory group. We've met with them about five times, and they were meant to be, they were meant to represent a broad representative of different groups in Santa Fe, in Santa Fe Springs, both from residents and, and definitely business groups. The Chamber of Commerce was, was also attended, and, and we had principals from, from schools attend the general plan advisory group. We've had four community workshops. We just recently had one in November of last year. We did a community survey, and then we had, I'll show on the next slide, multiple study sessions regarding the general plan. And then we do have upcoming public hearings, and I'll talk about some of those dates momentarily. Next slide, please. Some of the workshops we had introduced the general plan in September of 2020. We, we had a workshop on land use alternatives. We did have the council kind of straw, do a straw vote on the draft land use plan, mostly to get a plan in place, not to be adopted, but so that the environmental impact report and the general plan can be based off a land use plan. The, the land use plan won't be officially adopted until it's brought forth in, in front of the city council in a public hearing. So a general, so a draft land use plan has not been adopted yet. We've had an housing and environmental justice workshop in March of 2021. We had an EIR scoping meeting where we did have some staff members from adjacent cities attend a recent community workshop just a little over, a little less than a couple of months ago. And then we did have a specific public hearing to solicit EIR comments, also in December of last year, late last year, about a month ago. Next slide. Study sessions. As you can see, we've had numerous study sessions, both with the planning commission, city council, and then we did have one study session with the traffic commission. Well, I don't want to repeat all of these, but we had land use alternatives, general plan update study session back in May, in, late of last year, planning commission study session on the draft, release of the draft general plan, a city council study session in early November, and then another study session today. We are having a, an upcoming planning commission study session on January 10th next week. So we're still wanting to engage with the, with the community and some of the decision makers and make sure that they're aware of what we're presenting before they, before the materials are presented in the public hearings. The draft general plan takes forth the existing general plan that was adopted over 25 years ago. We've basically restructured it, rewrote the majority of the, of the general plan, and we've included new, new elements. One is a required element, the environmental justice element. Any city that has what's called disadvantaged communities and neighborhoods within their city are required by state law to prepare an environmental justice element. Excuse me. So we did include that element for this general plan update. We also decided that it was important to prepare an economic development element, and that's been included as part of this general plan as well. Next slide, please. I'm going to briefly go over the regional housing needs assessment. Many cities in the Southern California region are going through and finalizing their housing elements. There is a time period when housing elements are due. Technically, they were due on October 15, 2021. The state does allow 120-day grace period to allow for the adoption of the housing elements. I think there is a member of the public saying, if you don't adopt it in time, there is a four-year, you have to update the housing element in four years. Unfortunately, that's been removed from state law. At the end of my presentation, I'll show there are new penalties, other type of penalties that the cities can confront if they don't have adopted housing element, or they're not meeting some of the, or, or meeting the, the intent of the housing element. There are, there are some penalties that the state and other agencies that can affect cities, and I'll talk about that. But luckily, the four-year adoption process or update has been removed recently on the last, I think, starting January 1st with new state laws. So far, this past three or four years, it's been numerous state laws for housing and housing elements that have been adopted. For the Southern California region, which is the SCAG, the state has identified almost 1.3 million new housing units that need to be identified through zoning and, and land use plans in Southern California. Now, for housing elements, the cities are not responsible for building or constructing these housings, housing units. But the city has to provide the land uses and zoning regulation, regulation to allow for those number of units. Specifically for Santa Fe Springs, that is 952 new housing units. Next slide. So what we had to do for this housing element is show how we meet the 952 housing, housing units. The state also breaks up those specific housing units by income categories. So here it shows the 952 total units, but 253 and 159 have to be affordable to very low and low-income housing groups or households. And those are the incomes from 0 to 38,000 annual income to 61,000 for the low income. So what that means is are the housing element for Santa Fe Springs shows, how, how can housing be affordable to those groups? And typically, that is done by providing more higher-density housing development, but also to allow for affordable housing groups to be able to come in and build housing for those housing households with those incomes. All right, next slide, please. When we prepared the draft land use plan and the housing element, we looked for ways to meet that 952 housing units. What we did identify is that there is not a lot of vacant land available in Santa Fe Springs. So we had to look for alternative ways to find ways to meet that 952 housing units. We did look at accessory dwelling units, and the number, we do look at ADUs to kind of take off of some of those 952 housing units. And that's all, the state, the state is specific on how we can apply certain dwelling, accessory dwelling units against the RENA, the 952 units. Then we looked at where housing kind of made sense, where we had to make some land use changes. We looked at where townhomes could be appropriate, where we looked at mixed use could be appropriate. We tried to look for mixed-use sites that were either close to transit stations or, as part of the draft land use plan, we did identify an area for new, for a new downtown that could allow for some mixed-use housing units. Let's see, next slide, please. Well, let's talk about the draft land use plan. This is the existing general plan land use. This is the one key component of the land use plan that we're looking to revise, and it will be included as part of the general plan update, primarily included in the land use element. Next slide. The dra, this is the, the draft land use plan. This is the plan that the city council kind of affirmed, kind of on a a vote back in December of 20, 20, 20, 20, 2020. So a little over a year ago, again, what we built the land use plan and the general plan off of. So you can see, we've identified some new land use categories. We have a high-density residential land use category, which primarily only applies in the sphere of influence and to some existing high-density uses that are already built. We've included a new freeway commercial designation, a new downtown designation, and several mixed-use designation categories. I'll talk a little bit about them in a moment. And then we do have a new light industrial category that wasn't in the previous land use plan. Next slide. This is a close-up of the northern portion of the city. You could see to the north, where there's the dark purple, that is our mixed-use transit-oriented development designation. That is where a, a proposed light rail station is, is being proposed along Washington Boulevard. We wanted to create and identify land uses that will complement that trans, new transit station proposed for that area. In the middle, along Telegraph and Norwalk, you could see where the downtown designation is and that darker, darker red designation. And just one key point, the previous general plan did not include land uses for the sphere of influence. We have identified land uses within the sphere of influence, but those, that's just in, kind of as it meant to be as a vision for, in the event that the city were ever to annex those, those areas. There is no plan for the city to annex those areas in the general plan. But by state law, it is required that we do plan for the areas, for the city's sphere, what's called sphere of influence, areas that are in the county of Los Angeles, but are what's called directly in the sphere for the city. So we did basically transferred over county land uses and aligned it with the, with the draft land use plan. However, anyone that wants to develop in those areas still have to go to the county to get their permits for any new development within the sphere of influence. Next slide. This is the southern portion of the city and the land use plan. So at Imperial Highway and Bloomfield Avenue, there's another mixed-use designation for that particular corner. And that's exact, and that's across the street from the MetroLink station. And that's exact, and that's across the street from the MetroLink station, again, we're looking for a transit oriented development type uses. In that area. And keep in mind, the the Rena and the housing element identified nine hundred and fifty two housing units. The city in identifying housing units initially. We began to struggle to find where can we find housing units to meet that nine hundred and fifty two. Kind of the main driver for the mixed use designations and some of the changes to the land use plan, where to meet those housing, housing. Or at least increase the housing numbers to meet that nine hundred and fifty two housing units. Next slide, please. We did look at four opportunity sites in more detail, the environmental impact report also looks at these sites in a little bit more detail. The four sites that we looked at were two of the transit oriented development stations. One in on Washington Boulevard and the other one across the street from the MetroLink station. We've had specific goals and policies as well as just some conceptual diagrams, potential, what the potential development. Could be anticipated for those areas. And then these are again only concept, but the general plan does have specific guiding. Goals and policies specifically address those areas. We also had two other areas that we looked at for what's called more horizontal mixed use, the other two are more vertical mixed use, meaning you have. Commercial development on the lower floors and housing or office on the upper floors. But for Telegraph Road and Bloomfield, we looked at a horizontal with some commercial on a, on a, on the corner. And some townhomes to the rear and the same thing near the cor, corner of Florence and Norwalk Boulevard. Again, horizontal mixed use with some townhomes, really to complement the senior housing. And the mobile home park that is to the south and to the west of that development. And again, these are concepts, there's no proposed developments for these sites, but as I mentioned, we looked at these sites a little bit more specific. In the general plan and the E I R.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yeah, yes.
The Florence and Norwalk Boulevard, the. That's the Hathaway property, correct? Is that the, is that the property? That's on Florence and Norwalk?
Yes, it is.
So by us rezoning this to this type of. Business park housing. Do we take into consideration what it costs to build and what it costs for the land and how do we come up with that concept? To rezone it into an area that a developer has to want to develop that type of. Business park or housing unit at the cost of what they're buying land for. How do we come up with these concepts when I think there's a lot more that goes into these business parks or? If we own the land, we can, we can do that, but. These, 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 this property, from what I understood was this was for sale. It was in escrow and it fell out of escrow when they found out that this land was going to be rezoned to this type of. Development, because there's no profit in it for them to, to make. If we're going to direct them to build a certain land or make them build a certain use out of it. Then it's going to end up being stale and continue never to be developed because it's not going to be profitable for that developer.
Thanks, Councilor Sarno, so to answer your question, the first question is, you know, how did these concepts were developed? The first, the concepts were developed based off what the land use plan and the vision was identified for those, for these. In fact, for these four particular properties, including the Florence and Norwalk property. There was a financial feasibility study to show whether the, the housing. Could be developed, keep in mind, we're using some of the credits for the housing, for the nine hundred and fifty two housing units. To come from several of these sites, so there was a kind of a, a financial feasibility for the housing component. For these particular, particular sites to see whether the housing could be feasible. Based off the cost of land and and the cost to develop and to some of those into the housing sites. So some of that was taken into consideration. We did propose several concepts in front of the general plan advisory group. We brought these, we had several alternatives that was brought forth in front of the city council and I, I recognize, I don't believe you were during, you were on city council at that time. But we did look at several alternatives. And what those different alternatives could yield in terms of number of square footage for commercial. For industrial, for business park or for some of the residential, how many units? If the, some of those properties would convert over, so there's, there was definitely analysis that was done. As we went through the general plan process.
Yeah, okay, because I, I just, you know, land is probably almost. I don't want to say double, but it's gone up, it's almost ninety dollars a square foot right now for land, where two, three years ago, you're at probably fifty to sixty.
And if I may add something real quickly, yes, there is a real probability that maybe. Escrow did not close. Because we were upfront with everyone that came before us about developing this property. And telling them what the proposed general plan was, but we did tell them that under the existing zone. They could go ahead and develop an industrial building or several industrial building. What was really a factor in a lot of the decision was that they wanted to build a. Essentially a huge three hundred or two hundred thousand square foot building and they required. Us to vacate the street in order for them to do so. And we essentially based on the. The thinking at the time, and I imagine it still is about having huge industrial buildings with. A majority of truck loading those, we said that we would not vacate the street. So that was also a factor as to why it, it wasn't developed or escrow did not move forward.
Thank you, Wayne, I, I, I'm just saying, I don't, what I don't want is, we're gonna. Sooner or later, the person that's in that building is going to leave and it's going to stay empty. And it's not the, the prettiest sight already and being empty is going to in turn. Maybe attract homeless people, it's going to get worse before it gets better. And I don't want to be like a lot of our other areas where we can't develop them. And it's going to be just, you know, a blank canvas and a problem or an eyesore for the future. So I, that's, I just want to make sure that we're understanding that.
Alright, great, thank you, let's go to the next slide, please. Let's talk about some of the industrial land uses and some of the changes associated with the industrial areas. This shows the existing zoning map for Santa Fe Springs. We do recognize that there are some light manufacturing districts currently in the zoning code. And the zoning map, we do recognize that there was no light industrial designation in the general plan. In the current general plan, so the areas in red show essentially the limited manufacturing and the light manufacturing. Existing zones in, in the city, and as you can see, many of these zones in fact. Are up against or adjacent to existing residential uses, either both in Santa Fe Springs. Or to some adjoining residential neighborhoods in other communities, either Los Angeles County. Or in Norwalk or other adjacent cities, next slide. Again, this is also the light manufacturing and limited manufacturing zones in, in the. In the zoning map, but what I'm showing specifically is the draft land use changes that we've made for those particular areas, so obviously. We have carried over the light manufacturing zones to the light industrial, the new light industrial designation in the draft land use plan. Along Washington Boulevard, we did make some adjustments to the commercial, some of those are existing commercial uses. And we, we designated those as existing commercial designations. The light manufacturing, limited manufacturing does cover some of the business park designations. In the general plan around City Hall and those are things that will have to be amended or fixed in. In subsequent zoning amendments, next slide. These are some of the changes we've made to the heavy manufacturing zones in the zoning map. So you can see we have converted or changed some of the light industrial, some of the heavy. Industrial areas or heavy manufacturing in the zoning map to a light industrial designation in the general plan. And obviously the subsequent change to the zoning code won't be, it won't happen as part of this general plan update. But is to can, to change some of those heavy manufacturing to light manufacturing designations. You can see around downtown, although the general plan has it as a business park, the zoning has it as a heavy manufacturing. So we're, those are things that will have to be made, changes or fixes in subsequent zoning, zoning changes. But these also recognize some of the, the mixed use changes that we've made. I know there is a public commenter about a public business park to their property down by the five freeway, the former Vaughn's Distribution. Center, we did change a part, a portion of the property to a business park designation that primarily. Borders existing residential uses and there's some slides that I'll show you that kind of reflect what are some of the, the existing. Residential areas and why we down, why we change some of the heavy manufacturing to light industrial. Designation, so next slide, please. This slide shows the general plan changes that we've made, but it also shows the existing residential areas. Both in city of Santa Fe Springs, but the surrounding communities. And so what we did as part of an environmental justice element that corresponds with that element. Is to recognize some of the pollution burdens that some of the adjacent residential areas. Confront, and so properties that are within one hundred feet or within five hundred feet of a heavy industrial designation. Many of the properties either righted directly across the street or within the block of a residential uses were changed from. An industrial designation to a light industrial designation. We do recognize that when we make this, this change, the zoning. Will not be made right away, we are looking to postpone or move the zoning amendments. Both for the housing element and any other, and some of the other zoning changes to a, to a later date. To allow for both planning commission, city council to have some more say and do some more study sessions. On some of the zoning changes, not only to the land use districts, but to some of the regular, rail, regulations. Development standards and the allowed uses in some of those zones, particularly for the housing, the, the housing element. And the housing, the mixed use zones, and I'll talk a little bit about that and a little bit about why we need to change the, the zoning and. Basically, the brief answer is, state law requires to meet the housing, the nine hundred and fifty two housing units, you have to adopt the housing element. And then within one year of the, the housing element due date, you have to. Change the zoning code to allow for those housing units. Unfortunately, the zoning code or the, the deadline for that was October fifteen, two thousand and twenty one. So we have one year from that date to update the zoning code, particularly just for the housing units. And the mixed use where we're showing how we're meeting the nine hundred and fifty two housing units, those have to be done by October fifteen. However, I will show that there are grants and other monies that the city has obtained to help pay for some of the zoning changes. And this general plan, so I'll talk about that at, at the end of this presentation. Next slide, please. And recognizing what, why did we choose the five hundred feet, we didn't look at some resources on the distance. On what is recommended by the Air Resources Board in terms of certain. Industrial uses, we did use the more conservative five hundred feet distance. Recognizing if we were went any, any further, a thousand feet or a quarter mile, it would. Touch more industrial land uses and so we did not want, want to do that, next slide, please. The reasoning for the changes to the industrial uses. Is, is really based on the environmental justice element and then what we've heard from public engagement from the community. We did hear concerns from the public about truck traffic and some of the uses and, and emissions. From industrial uses. Now, for this, for a city to prepare an environmental justice element. You at least, you need to at least have one census tract that has seventy five percent or more. What's called a pollution burden within their track or what's, what's called an environmental, what's called a disadvantaged community, meaning that. Twenty, a portion of that census tract has both pollution burdens, but also socio economic challenges. That are considered within the top twenty five worst off in the state of California. So you can see on this map here, the residential areas in, in this dark red area. Are actually within the top five percent worst off areas within California, so all of the residential areas. Along the San Gabriel River are at, within the ninety five to a hundred percent of all census tracts in California that have. The most severe pollution burdens, there is that one neighborhood by the five and six oh five freeway that's at the ninety percentile. Meaning it's within the top ten percent of, of pollution burdens within the state. Let me explain what are some of the pollution burdens, next, next slide, please. And this is all within the environmental justice element in the general plan and this is all available online for downloading and reading. Some of the key environmental pollution burdens obviously are proximity to the freeways and the emissions associated with that. There are active oil wells, there is what's called a toxic release inventory, those are businesses that are allowed. By permit to admit different types of air, air pollution within Santa Fe, within their, within their businesses. They are monitored by various agencies. And then there's also businesses that are allowed to handle, generate or even transport hazardous materials. And those are identified on the map as well. Obviously, as a, an industrial city, proximity to industrial uses, proximity to the freeways. There's also contamination to groundwater, those are some of the challenges. The properties, both residential and. Industrial and commercial sites are confronting with, with some of the uses as well as some contamination. Of some existing. Soils and properties as well, all these kind of. Create those disadvantaged community numbers that registered city of Santa Fe Springs really high in the environmental justice. Category, so those are things that we looked at specifically on how to address some of those environmental pollutions, so next slide. And then this is again showing the residential and proximity to the industrial uses, rail lines, freeways. There are some strategies we've identified in the environmental justice element to help address some of those, one was looking at. Adjusting and changing some heavy industrial to light industrial, potentially creating what's called a pollution. Green buffer zone that separates residential and industrial areas, next slide. There's also goals and policies to help establish those, establishing a green buffer zone. As I mentioned, expanding the light industrial, but also policies to work with other agencies to make sure businesses are, as are being. Are meeting clean air standards, they're being monitored, there's prioritization, there's prior. Prioritization for cleanup of specific properties that have contaminated the soils many, many years ago. And part, and primarily to assist with properties that contaminated the groundwater in adjoining cities. Make sure that there's a priority to, to clean up both soils and water contamination, but also policies to provide. A community education for residents, for businesses on what, what are the challenges the community is facing and what can, what can we? What can be done to address some of the pollution burdens that are in the city, next slide. The freeway commercial zone is a designation, is an area that we have changed. We do want to recognize that the existing general plan does identify this area as a freeway commercial area. It did not make a change to the plan, but there is language that shows areas along the five freeway as a freeway commercial corridor. Next slide. The vision for this area is is really to attract the commute, the commuting and the high visitation along the I freeway corridor, the five freeway corridor. And as I mentioned, the current general plan identifies it as a freeway commercial. It's not shown on the plan. We wanted to emphasize that in this current draft land use plan. The zoning map does identify a freeway overlay that does allow both industrial manufacturing uses and commercial types of uses that are primarily intended for freeway corridor. Changes to those again are not being proposed at this time. And those will probably be proposed at a at a later zoning amendment. Next slide. Mixed use changes that we've made. As I mentioned earlier, we focused on mixed use areas around the trend, existing and planned transit corridors around a downtown. We did look at some properties along Telegraph Telegraph Road. Next slide. Some of those changes include for the mixed use designation, up to 40 dwelling units per acre that allows up to two to four stories in mixed use or multifamily height of the buildings. And we are counting a large portion of our arena numbers within these mixed use areas, particularly for the affordable housing and that requires a higher density by the by state law and by the house, the housing and community development department that actually will certainly will, that has to certify the housing element. Next slide. The downtown designation also allows for mixed use up to 40 dwelling units per acre, two to four stories in height. Again, we're looking to change the zoning in that area, but we are allowing some flexibility for some of the current uses to to remain and applies, have some flexibility in the downtown area. But specifically, we're looking for mixed use development, more residential development where appropriate, but also entertainment areas, community gathering areas, hotel uses. Or those are the types of uses we're looking within a downtown, within the downtown setting in Santa Fe Springs. Next slide. And then the more intense designation is the mixed use transit oriented community. Those are the areas against or adjacent to proposed and existing transit stations. They allow up to 60 dwelling units per acre, anywhere from 20 to 60 and three to six stories in height. We're looking for those areas to transition to more walkable areas that allow residents and the community members visiting those areas to take transit within those areas. Next slide. I want to talk a little bit briefly about some of the changes we've made to some existing church sites. There are new housing laws, and I apologize, there's a lot of text here, but I'm going to give you the the quick overview. Any church based on recent state law, the first one is SB 899 that now is taken into effect. Any church synagogue, any mosque face based faith based institution, religious institution can now bypass zoning restrictions and build affordable housing on their property as long as they make sure that it is meant to be affordable housing through covenants, other requirements that restrict housing to be affordable for at least 55 years for renters or at least 45 years for for buyers. Again, this is the state asking, requesting cities to allow religious institutions flexibility in building housing on either their parking lots or if they have some vacant land or miscellaneous surplus lands to build housing. So we have identified some church sites where we change the residential designation to allow some residential uses. The other law, recent legislation is AB 1851. This basically allows affordable housing on parking lots of churches, meaning the church can stay. They can build their parking, they can build affordable housing on parking. They just don't have to replace all of the parking. They only have to replace or at least keep 50% of the parking towards for their Sunday church services or or their whenever they have services. So that means 50% of their parking lot could be devoted to housing, affordable housing. So they don't have to replace. So if they were to build housing on their parking lot, they don't have to replace 50%. Now, if they replace all of the parking lot, they have to find at least 50% parking elsewhere. So again, flexibility for religious institutions to provide housing on their properties. And again, this is the state looking for ways to find ways to build more housing in California. Next slide. All right, I'm going to wrap up this presentation with our next steps. As I mentioned earlier, we are having a January 10th planning commission study session. We will be looking at kind of a similar presentation and any comments that were provided by the city council and the public presented to the planning commission, their study session. The planning commission adopting adoption hearing is set for January 24th. So that's coming in about three weeks. Then we're looking for a city council adoption hearing on February 10th. And then ultimately, we like to finalize the documents in in February, the end of February.
As I mentioned. Yes. I believe I'm Quang and Laurel, correct me, but isn't the meeting February the 8th and not the 10th?
Oh, my apologies. Yeah. Well, yeah, we'll make sure.
That is correct.
Great, thanks, Wayne. Thanks, Quang. My apologies, it's February 8th. We were both looking at February 10th and 8th as a special study sessions with the city council. So it is February the 8th for city council adoption. As I mentioned earlier, we're going to push the targeted zoning code amendment out in the winter of spring. We like to have some more study sessions and town hall meetings on the zoning code changes that we are making specifically for the housing to allow the mixed use and housing changes. And then looking to adopt targeted zoning, meaning we're not doing an entire zoning code amendment. We're just targeting specific chapters for changes to the zoning code. Next slide. To recognize some of the penalties for not adopting the housing element and the land use plan, unfortunately, the land use element and the housing plan have to be adopted together to meet some of the state requirements. Not only that there's 120 day grace period, which which leads up to the till February. So we like to adopt the housing element in February, but not adopting the housing element in February. February also leads to some loss and some grants that the city has attained. So really looking to adopt the housing element and the land use plan, the general plan, the entire general plan in February that I that we mentioned earlier, February 8th. If the housing element is not adopted at that time, there are some legal liabilities. Now, as I, as someone mentioned earlier, one of the older penalties was having to adopt adopt the housing element every four years as opposed to eight years. But the state has gotten away with that. Really, the key penalty is it opens up the city for legal liability, meaning if you don't have an adopted housing element and one that's not certified, it opens up to lawsuits on on challenging the housing element or challenging the city of not having an adopted housing element. As I mentioned earlier, we are pushing the zoning code amendments out a little further to study those a little bit more. There are some grants that have been applied to to pay for the zoning code amendments. We like to, we have to adopt those by October 15, not only just for the grants, but there is additional penalties if we don't adopt the housing changes to the zoning code by October 15, but we do like to do those sooner. Have some study sessions, as I mentioned, in in the winter, spring and adoption in the spring. Next slide. And again, if we don't adopt the housing element, but also if the city finds a way to not meet the requirements set forth in the housing element, there are legal suits, suits that could be applied to the city. Eventually, the state can come in, remove some of the permitting authority from from the city and allow housing to be built a little bit more easily. There's some financial penalties that the state can apply. There's, there's been some examples of cities in Southern California that have been penalized for changing and not meeting the housing element that was set forth or the the requirements set forth in the housing element. Next slide. The court could take over in terms of receivership. They can make sure that they remedy why the city is not adopting their housing element, why they're not meeting the the requirements in the housing element. And they can also just change the requirements of building permits and planning permits and streamline all housing and development permits through a less rigorous ministerial, meaning over the counter permits for all types of housing development. So it takes the control away from local government. So not for not either adopting or meeting the requirements for a housing element. Next slide. With that, that concludes my presentation. Both city staff and myself are available to answer any any questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Jose. This is John. Question for you? So pretty much, and this might be a question for you and also for planning. But you know, the general plan, of course, you know, it has to be done. But so we are pretty much bound by state laws to incorporate the state requirements, correct? This is not something that we have some flexibility to. We have to adopt everything that the state is requiring us to do?
Yes, the state, the state does require jurisdictions to adopt their housing element to meet the arena. But also, there's a slew of housing state laws that the the housing element that's I that we've prepared is intended to meet. There are density requirements, making sure that there's enough density or sites that can meet the affordable housing requirements, making sure that those housing or sites are available over the next eight years. We have to show substantial evidence that that's in that's applied. But yes, this is all primarily a state pushed requirement that's that's required by the state.
Okay, and then just also one more, you know, because you talked about SP 899, the requirements for for churches to be able to have, what is that low and very low income housing that they're able to utilize some of their land for?
Correct, if they, correct, I mean churches, they, if they provide affordable housing that's for the low and very low, and they have covenants that provide for renters. I think that was what 55 years and or if they built condominiums or or subdivide for purchase homes. Those have to be have covenants for 55, 55 years, or I may have switched those. Yes, then they can actually bypass local zoning regulations. So if there's certain zoning regulations that doesn't allow housing or has kind of restrictions, they can bypass some of the local, local restrictions.
Okay, and then there if they don't want to do anything with their property, in other words, they're, they're not required to have this. It's only they can if they would like to, but the state's not putting pressure on them to convert 50% of their property into this type of housing?
Right, there's no pressure from the state or from the local governments and from city of Santa Fe Springs. And just reminder, the 952, the the city is not obligated to build any of those. It all has to be done by property owners. The difference is the the city has to make sure the zoning and the land use is in place. However, the city cannot coerce the churches to build any of those housing. It's up to them. The state has given those churches flexibility to allow for housing on their property, but there's no pressure to build those and those churches can remain as long as they want to without building any housing. Now, we do recognize there has been some a a property that where a church has closed and was sold or I shouldn't say sold, but looking at for different development. But if the, if there's existing churches that want to remain, these laws don't preclude them from developing housing. They they can stay as a church. It just gives them flexibility.
Thank you.
I have a question. I know some of our areas, we have so much historical areas. Isn't there anything that we can do if it's close to historical areas? We can be actually like exempt from it? And so we don't have to follow all of the protocols since of all of our historical areas that we have in the city?
I'll let Wayne or Quang, I don't know if you want to take the lead in answering some of the questions. Let me know if I can, if I need to answer any of the questions. I'll let you guys take the lead on answering the questions and then let me know if there's some technical questions I can, I can answer.
I believe there are functionary, I believe there are two or so, one being the Clark estate that has been identified on some historical landmarks. So we're really limited as to what can be done with those, but that's about it. We do not have a historical, let's say we had a historical preservation ordinance and we had certain properties designated under that category. Then yes, the state and others would be limited, but we we do not have such. Does that answer the question?
Thank you, Wayne. Yes, that's good. I just because I was just concerned about how many historical areas we have. I just know if that would help us in anything, you know, to eliminate a lot of the housing. Now, um, another thing like we have like motion, we have a lot of our our businesses concerned about the timeframe of that. Is there any way that we can do part of this and their area? We can at a later date, like have more study sessions on it to give it to help with the the business residents in the city too?
Adopt adopt the the housing element of it and then adopt the in the business, the industrial part later.
Yeah, can, is there something that we can do that that way? We can work with them on that part too, since they are such a big part of our city?
Jose, you want to answer that?
Yeah, I can, I can answer that. The key, yes, you, you, there, there are definitely some options to during the public hearing process or 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 staff recommendations to make, to bifurcate some of the the changes to the land use plan. Keep in mind, the environmental impact report reflects all of the land use changes, but the environmental impact can still stay. If you adopt it, can still stay certified. If you want to make the industrial land use changes later or study them even more, my only recommendation is you don't increase the intensity or or of those industrial areas where the environmental impact report no longer applies. But my recommendation is is definitely to, you have to adopt the land use element with the housing element. If anything, you would just take out the changes to the zoning area, to the industrial areas, but still move through, move forward with the land use, with the land use plan, because the housing element needs the land use plan. Otherwise, there there would be more state law issues. Again, as as you recall, the the one of the key drivers for the the land use changes is the housing. And then if we go beyond October 15 for the zoning changes, the cities then is it has some is definitely going to have some legal liabilities in not, not only not having a, not having a housing element, but the implementation, the zoning aspects. So we definitely have to have the zoning in place before October 15, but the sooner the better. But yeah, you can separate, make those industrial changes at a later date. But obviously, there are costs associated with that, having a consultant make additional changes later on. But again, that's a council, a council decision you guys can make.
And what I would say is part of the reason why, and and I have to speak on this, although it may upset. and, and I have to speak on this, although it may upset some people, but part of the reasoning why some of the speakers spoke was because they stated they were not part of the process. This has been going on for close to two years. We we got a segment of the population, including the industrial developers, real estate. We got a very good segment of the population to be part of the G-PAC. The fact that some people at the initial onset participated in the meeting and then they lost interest or they participated throughout the entire presentation and may not necessarily have paid attention. That is essentially on them, but in terms of staff going through the process and them being part of the process, they were part of the process. So when I hear people say that they did not have an opportunity or they were not given the opportunity, I cannot just sit back and say that was correct because that wasn't the case. I, I just want to make that clear. Thank you.
I have a question.
I have a question, Jose. Um, oh, go ahead. Sorry, Ms. Mayor, go.
Oh, that's okay. Go ahead.
So I have a question. What is the normal timeframe for a start to finish uh in a during a general plan?
Uh, they range uh anywhere from about a year and a half to two years. So in March, we're approaching the two-year mark.
So we're, we're, we're doing two years, but we're under a COVID era of minimal staff. You know, the, a year, I don't, I don't really count as um even though you did things internally, I don't think it really uh was in full effect because of the fact that we did have minimal staff for a year. Things might probably were not as um I don't want to say uh enlightened for, for people to be able to join and, and give uh information like what Wayne was saying, because we did give people ample ample time to do this, but um, I, I mean, I'm new, so I've only been here the year, but I know in the year that I've been here, it's been very minimal of, you know, I know, I think we've had two uh study sessions on this, but really, to really get an understanding of, you know, what's going on, I think we could have done a little bit more, better uh prep for the business part of it and then the housing part of it instead of putting it all together. That's just my opinion, but I, I, again, I'm new.
No, no, I, I, no, thanks. Uh, understood. I, I will say that we, I, this engagement process was very, very expansive and, and yes, a, a large part of uh the general plan advisory group and some of the initial workshops were done in a, a Zoom setting like this, but uh, I'll be honest, I think the Zoom ha- has been really successful in, in engaging uh with the general plan advisory group. We had uh various uh uh business, uh, as Wayne mentioned, business stakeholders uh attended the general plan advisory groups. Uh, we had the Chamber of Commerce attend. We had various um, uh brokers uh attend uh the general plan advisory group. Um, the engagement is, has been, uh, we've had four workshops. Three of them were, were virtual workshops, but we did have a uh, an in-person workshop in, in November. Uh, and like the previous slides that showed, we, we, we did our best to get the uh word out and I, I recognize that COVID probably did uh reduce some of the attendance um in, in some of the uh, the, the virtual meetings. Uh, but we, this, I know staff worked really hard to get the word out. Um, so.
Uh, Jose, I had a question. Um, on the, the zoning, once we finalize this general plan, every zone like industrial, um, you know, the restaurants, the churches, the housing, that is set in stone. You can't rezone after the general plan?
No, the, the, the zoning will not be a part of the adoption in January and February uh to the mixed use and to the industrial. Uh, those will have to be done at a later date. The, the the housing probably amendments to the zoning code will probably be done in the spring. Um, the zo- the zoning changes to allow for that nine hundred and fifty-two, that has to be completed before October fifteenth. Um, the changes to the industrial will probably not take place right away. Uh, I'll let Wayne or staff uh, that will have to be either done at a different, um, uh, well, and I take that back. We could, there, we could uh, uh uh, change some of the light industrial uh, uh uses on the map uh as part of the, the, the update. So yes, we could, we could, uh, the zoning changes are not part of this adoption, but they'll, they'll be brought forward uh to the planning commission city council later on. We do obviously there'll be changes to allowed uses to development standards, particularly for the mixed use zones. Uh, so we definitely want to work with the planning commission city council to review those, make sure they understand, uh, work with the um uh, property owners and the public on some of those changes we make uh to the zoning amendment and have some meetings uh like this to, to have, to review those types of zoning decisions uh before the zoning is a, is adopted uh probably in, in the spring or summer.
Oh, okay. Oh, I got it. Okay, the general plan supersede and dictates the future zone for the property. Okay, thank you. I'm sorry, uh, does the council have any questions or feedback that they, we would like to give at this time?
Um, could we?
Uh, Juanita, we can't hear you?
We could still opt out to make a, a different option that we still meet certain parts of this, of the general plan. Um, hold on just a second. I said, we still have options, right? We could still change things. It doesn't have to be a certain way or are we like set in stone on what we're doing already? I mean, that's why we're having these meetings, right?
I don't think necessarily that we're set in stone. We have a vision for the next twenty years and yes, it does include include downzoning the areas close to, to residential. But I think what's important for everyone to understand, although those are proposed, nothing will really occur within, let's say, the next twenty years if those uses continue as there's been, because once the general plan is adopted, then those become non-conforming and subject to a certain time period within which they remain non-conforming. So for example, uh, heavy manufacturing use next door residential that's in downzone. That downzoning will occur in the future. It isn't going to occur right now and I think what happens is so you may hear the argument, well, why change it now? If it's not going to come into play twenty years from now? It's very simple and twenty years from now, if that property is to be redeveloped, it will be redeveloped under the existing zoning if there's no change. So if it's heavy industrial, that is what it will be twenty years from now. But at least if you make a decision and it's downzone, then you have the ability to at least regulate it within that time period as opposed to twenty years from now when you're having the conversation and you're tied to the existing zone for the size of the building, number of truck loading doors, uh, trucking use, you will be tied to that and will not have an opportunity to change that. Thank you.
So I have a question, Wayne. You, you said a very important thing. This is the vision that the city has uh for the next twenty years. But from what I'm understanding and I'm, I'm not speaking for my council or my colleagues, but I don't think that this is their vision because I don't think they understand a hundred percent of what is truly going on. And that is a problem because we are set in presence for the next twenty years, guys. So our business community, our housing community, and if we're not in full understanding of what we're doing, we need to get there very fast. And it's very important. So, you know, if, if we're unsure, then if we need to have more study sessions between now and the next three weeks, then we have to get on board with everybody and get this done the right way.
Uh, Wayne, I, I still had a question about the zoning. So when you say that the general plan, you know, just say that it's complete. Okay, and Jose told me that, uh, Jose told us that, um, you know, the zoning won't be confirmed till later, but the, but the zoning goes by what the general plan states. Is, is that accurate? Like the, uh, the map right there shows all the different types of zoning. And so when you, uh, you know, when, when, just because the zoning isn't complete, the general plan is complete. So that means we have to abide by the zoning of the general plan. Is that right?
So, and Jose could help on this. So the general plan is essentially the master document and the general plan has to be consistent with, excuse me, the zoning has to be consistent with the general plan. So you have the general plan first and then you change the zoning to be consistent with the general plan. Does that help, Madam Mayor?
Yes, that, that uh answers my question because, okay, what about these churches? Uh, um, you said something about churches can have housing on them. Uh, so does, does the zoning for a church have a, a specific zoning or just say that a church leaves a place and then we can rezone that church after the general plan is complete?
No, that's on, it's zone now, right, Wayne?
Yes, so do, let's say there's a church and the zoning for churches PF public facilities. Okay, if that church was to go away and typically it's, it's one year. Well, let's say that church was to just go away. The fact that it is PF means that a year from now, two years from now, a church could be built on that side because the zoning allows for it. With the new state law, what it means is that even though a church is on PF and it does not allow current zoning, does not allow for affordable housing, with the current law, it doesn't matter what the zoning states. That property can build affordable housing and essentially usurp the city's zoning requirement, not only to allow the affordable housing, but also to allow a higher building, a building closer to the setback. And even as Jose mentioned, with respect to parking, eliminating at least fifty percent of the parking. Does that help, Madam Mayor?
Yeah, that helps a lot. Thank you. And, and does any of our uh council, do we have any more questions to ask?
Uh, I have a question, Wayne. How many study sessions has the planning commission also had?
Uh, Kwong, I know, uh, Jose. We've had a couple of studies, joint study.
We've had a, a joint study session in November of two thousand and twenty. Um, we also had another study session just recently in November and the next study session is, is planned for January the tenth.
So we've had three in a year. In two years, all right?
That is correct. With, with, with the planning commission, I, I think that was the specific question.
I think that's a lot of material to uh, to intake and to decide the future of our city and what we want, especially like the churches that the mayor's talking about. So the same thing that's happening with the, with the Mormon church. Um, there's a possibility of a development there and because we are pushing that element to be zoned, our three, whatever it is, the zoning, those builders will have a right to build what it's done for, whether we like it or not in the next five years, ten years, whatever it is. And that's what we have to be conscientious, be conscious of.
Yeah, and I think just to piggyback on what you said, council member Sonno, if the developer, if the church had to, if they hadn't been gone for three years, they could have built affordable housing right now on the site.
Okay, uh, do we have any more questions from our council?
Um, this is Joe Angel again. I just want to, you know, I know we're in the process of.
Um, I have a question and.
Uh, I'm sorry, Joe Angel, go ahead.
Um, and uh, Madam Mayor, I, I do.
Okay, Juanita, you just put your, your mute button on. Uh, Juanita, did you want to say something?
Yeah, um, yeah, yeah, I, I have, this is my, I mean, I, I know we are doing this and I know the staff. I am, could you hear me? Hello?
You broke off a little bit. We didn't hear you.
Hello, could you hear me?
Now we can.
Hello? Could you guys hear me or no?
Yes.
Yes, yes.
I'm not sure she can hear.
Oh, could you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, um, it's, um, I, this is like I, but Jay was saying the questions that you're, well, I feel like I I feel like uh we're rushing it and I know you guys have been doing it for two years, but I think there's so much, there's stuff that we can change still, stuff that we as councils still need to learn more on this. And we could change things on there, like zoning zones for the church, zoning zones for other things. Is there any way we can have more study sessions on this and this is just my, just for myself? I don't know how the other council feel about it?
Uh, Joe Angel, uh, Mayor Protem, Joe Angel Zamora, he had something to say as well.
Yeah, so for me, I just want to let you guys know, I mean, if there is, I mean, I don't think there's confusion. I just think there's a lot, there's a lack of either translation or um information that is, you know, getting to the council. Or if it may, if, 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 if we are feeling this way, then it seems like maybe even our planning commission is probably feeling the same way. So, um, you know, I have no problem if we have to break things up that, you know, but if there's anything that we can put into motion now, let's do that now. And then the other factors, you know, um, let's, you know, let's go ahead and have some study sessions to be able to explain the things uh more appropriately or have a cleaner argument or cleaner, um, not argument, but you know, cleaner conversation when it comes to understanding or even comprehending what's being put on the general plan. Um, I know that it is a vision for the future for the next twenty to thirty years and we just have to make sure that whatever we do is, you know, we just make sure that it's it's to the liking of all of us. And if one person is, is not understanding, then I think we should go to, you know, having some, some sorts of study sessions and I know Jay said, you know, hey, we have three weeks or, you know, even longer, but still, um, I know we can have special meetings, have uh other things. So we just have to make sure that we can make ourselves available to have these meetings. And then um, those of you who have any questions or concerns, um, you know, that are in the audience, make sure you keep, you know, you specify, you put everything in writing, um, because we do not want to keep prolonging this. Um because we do not wanna keep prolonging this. And so that would help us a lot. If you have any uh answers or you, if you know of other areas that, you know, have a different general plan that you think we can, you know, um some sort, you know, come to some kind of agreement that it can help us here, that they, you know, they have some kind of zoning in other areas that you can help us up and help us out with, feel free to give us that information. So then we can take everything and be able to inspect it and then make uh make a decision, uh an informed decision. So I'm okay if, you know, having another study session, but as long as we give the directive clearly and move things in motion.
And I just wanting to add, and if necessary, I will have assistance from a attorney. This is a study session. So there really isn't any action that is supposed to be taken today or any motion.
No, there's no.
So I just wanted to to clarify that.
No, Wayne, there is no motion today because it is a study session. So there is no action taken. The only thing is, we can give a directive and and that's it. You know, we can give informed consent to say, hey, this is what we wanna look at. Or this is, hey, we if we wanna have more study sessions to actually prolong the date, we can do that.
I totally understand Mayor Protem Zamora. And if that is consistent with what our attorney states, then then that would be fine. I I would just need to defer to her.
Just to clarify, um Wayne, it it it's correct. It's just a matter of obtaining comments. This is, there's no action that's taken. So you obviously you're hearing the feedback from your council members.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, Madam Mayor, this is the city manager.
Yes.
Yeah, I just want, uh I'm hearing comments that council is feeling rushed and uncomfortable that there's more information they need before making a final decision. This afternoon, we were in a meeting with staff with a lot of the industrial leaders of the community. Not not all that are here tonight who spoke, but some were. They're feeling rushed that there's some important, important things that they feel need to be heard by the council. Impacts to their uh land that they own that will have long-term impacts. And um I they they are feeling rushed, even though there's been two years of activity and lots of meetings. I don't want anybody ever feel a a process is rushed. We do have some legal mandates with the housing element. Uh but we do have time. I don't want, it does cost money to extend the consultant's work, but that may be money well spent if everybody's not comfortable with everything getting wrapped up the next six weeks, so or or less. So um you know, we can have more study sessions. We gotta make sure council's available. Um that's always a challenge, but we can work through that. But I don't want this council or any sector of the community feeling that they're not getting enough time to get everything heard and and um analyzed.
One thing I would like to add real quickly, and Jose or Jack, maybe you could comment on that. If this is not adopted by the the date for the for the housing element, how does that impact our our grant? And the reason I'm asking about this is I'm trying to figure out if at a later time, I'm going to need to go back to the city council and ask for an appropriation of five hundred thousand or three hundred thousand. So I I think that's important to know. I I'm not certain as to whether or not I would need to do that. Jose or Jack, could you please help me on that?
I'll do, I'll defer to Jack on the grants.
Hello, can you hear me? This is Jack.
Yes.
Hi, yes, thanks for inviting me into the discussion. I've been listening. Uh Honorable Mayor and members of the council, uh Wayne. Um what I see at this point is if we do not adopt the housing element, land use element, circulation and land use by February eleventh, twenty twenty-two, this coming month, it would jeopardize the Caltrans grant, which was um three hundred and thirty-three thousand seven hundred dollars roughly. Now, when I say jeopardize, um I I'm not sure that would mean a complete a hundred percent loss of the funds, but I'm kind of leaning towards that would be the case. And the reason why is the Caltrans grant was used to fund the preparation of those elements, the uh land use, circulation, environmental justice. And so i- it's all part and parcel. They're all tied together. Um and that's why those four elements then must be approved by February in order to preserve the the grant. But what I hear is that there's a need for greater communication, more study sessions. Can that happen between now and then? You know, I think we can give it our best to uh arrange for those sessions to address the concerns of the community and the council. Um but I I do believe that's where we would be as far as the Caltrans grant. The other grants, which is two hundred and twenty-five thousand, those are for the co-de amendment work that's related to the housing element. And so there would be kind of a sequential or domino impact on those grants for two hundred and twenty-five thousand as well.
So Jack, could you do us a favor and give us some kind of timeline on, you know, what you just mentioned? So then we have that, so everybody knows by this date, we have to make sure we make we make a decision, uh informed decisions, so we can actually get situated. So I mean, of course, I understand what Ray's saying, that we gotta make ourselves available. Um so whatever we need to do, if that's what, you know, if council's um looking at, I'm I'm fine with that. Uh but I mean, I know we're not trying to lose the grant, you know, especially that's a large sum of money that, you know, um that we we can't really, you know, forego. So either way, whatever we need to do to to do our necessary duties to make sure we can make that decision.
And we have, we have uh almost five weeks until we have to make that decision. Are, is there any chance to get any extensions on the three hundred and thirty-three and the two hundred and twenty-five? Uh Jack?
Um Madam Mayor, um as far as I know from written correspondence, those are hard and fast dates. Um let me break it out. Caltrans, definitely, the end of February is the the drop dead date for Caltrans grant. Now, keep in mind.
End of February?
End of February for the Caltrans grant.
What is end, like February twenty-eighth?
Yes.
Okay, cuz you said we need to make a decision by the eleventh.
That's that's the schedule for the HCD to remain compliant.
For the housing element?
For the housing element.
Okay.
And because they're all tied together with the housing element, land use, circulation, you know, um they're all kind of a part and parcel. On the other grants, the two state grants, they're on a much longer timeframe. Um but the 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 key date there has to do with, again, the housing element, non-compliant, one-year extension for the code amendment work, which then takes it to February, no, takes it to October of twenty-two.
Jack, the the elements, elements you just mentioned that are being funded by various sources, you've heard the discussion on what the concerns are. It sounds possibly those elements can be approved, or at least some of them, that won't jeopardize the funding. Cuz I know definitely the housing, they're all on board with it's, um but the other couple, I'm not sure. There seems to be just some narrow issues that council and the industry groups have been discussing. Are the things that have funding jeopardy, can those be passed without that um and that those other discussions can be bifurcated where we can discuss those, you know, and go beyond those time periods?
You know, Ray, I I feel a little cautious to kind of break those apart and try to approve them separately of each other, uh simply because they've been developed through this course of time as an integrated set of policies and goals. And but I do think, you know, it would be wise to kind of look at this whole project. What are the things that are are in agreement and those that are of concern that we could maybe address and somehow reshape into some sort of fashion that would be satisfactory to the to you and the city council and to the and to the community, to the extent possible, of course. Um but I I I wouldn't want to say yes, let's let's bifurcate some elements and separate them out and and take action on those. Uh because they're all tied together, they're all integrated.
Okay, well, why don't we have a, why don't we have a study session, uh you know, in a week and a half, push it out? And in this interim time, we find out what is it that our council wants? What what kind of information do we need to study on? And then have another study session and just push it out, push the planning out and get our council on board with the information that they need.
I would probably say also recommend, how much time do you guys really, do you need, like I'm talking staff-wise, to do another study session to um to help answer some of the questions that that are being formulated? Is it a week, week and a half? Is it a couple of days? What do you guys think?
Who are you talking to?
That, I'm asking the question this guy.
Well, um Mayor Protem Zamora, I think it's more discussion amongst you and the the uh concerned parties. And uh I think we can have another meeting. I'm I'm just thinking, uh city clerk, let me know if the meeting, the next council meeting, um two weeks from now. Uh I don't think we have a study session planned for five o'clock, um or not, that could be one place. But I think, um you know, there's a different parties, you know, that I that I met today, some I think are are on this call but didn't speak and may now uh want an opportunity to speak. Um and and that could be, maybe if you give them a second bite at an apple to speak now and then they have another time to speak at the next meeting, if we can do a study session, um you know, uh two weeks from yesterday. Uh and so I think the issue is, you need to know more about their concerns and what you wanna do with those.
Is there any way that we can also get your guys' notes, the notes that we're taking for, not all the notes, but the notes that we're taking, what the what the the industry side is looking for?
Uh if I understand correctly, it appears that the two issues, and again, staff, correct me, and consultant, the two issues seems to be the freeway overlay zone and the downzoning of properties next to residential. That seems to be based on our meeting earlier today with the larger group and based on the the speakers that spoke earlier. That seemed to be the main two issues. Would everybody concur on that?
Yes.
Yes.
I would agree with that.
Yes.
So then that's what we really need to address then. So I guess provide information, have meeting discussion so that everybody understands the basis of that, just so that everybody is more familiar, I I would say.
Or is, is everybody okay with the housing element?
I mean, I'm okay with the housing element, but also, but like like Jack said, we might have to be, you know, push both of them at the same time. But is there any?
The zoning, yeah, we can't do the industrial zoning, yeah.
Yeah, so let's just do this, and I don't know if you guys are okay with this. What happens if we, you know, section off into ad hoc committees? We have the industry community, whoever wants to come in, and then we, you know, then we their information, you know, I'm not saying separately, we can vote two, two, one, uh and then just, you know, just so we can have the communication and we do it, you know, this week, having communication from this time to the next week. So we can knock that out of, you know, knock that out. And then if we have to have another study session on the day of the, you know, the meeting, then we can also have a five o'clock study session, just so at least we understand and we have some kind of dialogue going now. So cuz even though you guys have this meeting today, we don't have that information or we're not privileged to that information, what you guys talked about, you know, when it comes to staff and 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 in the in the industry. So I think that's what we wanna make sure that we are all getting the same rhetoric. I think that's what I'm hearing from Juanita and Jay. And if that's the case, then what if we do ad hoc, you know, we start, you know, we do our meetings with them. And like I said, whoever wants to be involved, they're welcome to be involved, um you know, and then, you know, there, everybody can just, you know, give their, give their concerns, whoever it may be, that has the the issues at hand. So we can better understand what they are trying to explain, to hear it from their side.
Mayor Protem Zamora, I think that's a great idea, but we got a little bit of problem. Unfortunately, Ivy's not here, you know, two, two and ones. I know there are some, you know, issues with that, especially when you bring outside groups in, usually those are internal meetings. So I would um like to get Ivy's opinion, but I know Katya is online. I know, I I know she always has concerns about those types of meetings. So I I'd be curious to see Katya, any concerns? I know Ivy's had those in the past, especially.
Yes, I do actually have some. I'm sorry.
So I'm sorry about that. So maybe we can have another study session or a meeting, also make it as a study session. But then they get, maybe they can do a presentation, each individual that that has their concern or if it's multiple individuals, so then they can actually express. So if it's ten minutes, they need fifteen minutes to 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 explain themselves. And, you know, we do that next week. I don't know if that's enough time for them, but I I'm figuring, if they already know what they're already talking about now, then it is enough time to get them, you know, just to get the dialogue going.
I I think um they're they're very organized. They have very strong opinions on these topics. I think it's a matter, if we could do that during the daytime hour, when um I'm sure, you know, if any, if there's a time.
That's the thing, if if either way, I mean, we, you know, we have, we have to make the decision. So if it's daytime, then that's what we have to do. We have to make that sacrifice. That's why we're up here. So I mean.
We just, we just, yeah, we would just need to brownact it and um and have a a meeting, like a study session, but so those specific dialogues can occur.
Hey, is that okay with you guys or Juanita, um John, Annette?
Yes, that's fine with me. Let's do it. If if everybody's uh, if everybody wants to do that.
And Ray, just to address um the the question with respect to if if you do want to go with the ad hoc committee, you you can go ahead and do that. It just would have to be one ad hoc committee, less than quorum. So and with a specified um scope and time, but obviously if you wanna do another study session like you guys are talking about.
I think it's cleaner when you have them all five there and there's just not gonna be any question and if they're all available to doing that.
Yeah, if all five of us are hearing it, we're all hearing the same information. So it makes it easier that we all hear it. But like I said, they present their cases and and you know, then our staff present their cases, then we we can make an informed decision from there.
And then you have the planning commission on January tenth.
Huh?
You have the planning commission, January tenth, that they're gonna do this. So we'll be able to hear that. The planning commission has a has a study session next week, right?
Yes.
That is correct.
But it sounds like.
That would help us get some more information of what they're, they've been thinking to combine everything together. Cuz they, they might have issues with the housing market, the housing element also.
Yeah, and the question is, I guess, and Jay's bringing up the plan, is it okay for all of us? I mean, of course, we can sit together, whatever may be, but what is the best possible way if we all just showed up to that? Is that okay if we do that?
Well, there there is, there are things called joint meetings. You couldn't have a, there is a possibility of a joint commission in council meetings. I've done those, um just that needs to be uh notified, noticed correctly, but you can do a joint meeting. And now that we're doing, I put out an email today, just due to our numbers, where that meeting was gonna be a uh a Zoom meeting anyways. Um so that makes it easier uh to to bring people together by Zoom. We've done it. And and it's a matter of if you wanna do that and still have your separate meeting um later next week, uh you know, during the daytime hours. But I wanna be sensitive to all of your schedules. I say that. But I know there's working people that are council council members and and I just wanna make sure, you know, between um uh Annette, Juanita and John, that, you know, they're, and Joe Angel, that you're all, you're all available.
Well, well, what?
You're you're a business owner, I'm sorry.
I know I'm available. Either way, I'll make time to be available because this is important. I mean, to our community and our in our business community, so it it's only. I mean, to our community and our, in our business community, so it, it's only fair to hear them out. And, and, you know, we know the staff put in such, you know, such a hard effort, and, you know, I don't want to have that un, unnoticed. So I'm okay with, you know, doing what we need to do to make sure we press this along.
Yes, I'm okay too, uh, whatever time is, uh, we have it, I'll make myself available.
Same here, it's got to be done, uh, then the sooner the better. And even if, uh, for the next, maybe counseling.
I have a question. I know we have.
We should get started at five o'clock, uh, if that's even a possibility, or like Ray had mentioned.
I, I think.
The planning commission.
So just let me, so on the tenth, we have the study session at five o'clock and Malia Holmes at six o'clock for the meeting of January the tenth.
So then we can probably either meet, you know, after that, pick out a date to meet after that.
Yes, is there a certain date that we?
Um, I have a que.
Uh, Juanita, you keep breaking out, uh, when you're talking, we could hear you say you have a question.
Yeah, I have, I feel like I'm on delayed mode.
Yeah, we're hearing it delayed, something's going on with you, Juanita.
Well, what if we meet on the eleventh and the twelfth? Are you guys okay with that, the eleventh and the twelfth, morning time?
Yeah, I'm okay with that, we, we just said.
And we can do it during.
Could you hear me now?
I could hear you, Juanita. Okay, we all said that we're okay, so.
I, I, I'm sorry, are you saying you want to meet two times with the industry groups, or is that what you're saying, or?
No, 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 I'm just saying that, it's just, if the meeting happens on Monday for the.
I think I'm delayed, do you hear me?
So since it's fresh, I would say we meet Tuesday, Wednesday, right after that, it's still fresh.
Okay, so you're, you're giving us two options to meet, two different days that we, we can see who's available, or?
Exactly, we can choose there, because I know you're saying to make it during the day. So I'm just saying while it's fresh from the planning then comes directly to us.
I, I know, um, council member Mora, I, I know you prefer Tuesdays as.
Yeah, Tuesdays are preferred, but, you know, if we had to do Tuesday and or Wednesday, uh, just give me a time, I'll, I'll make it work. This is important.
I'll do Tuesday to accommodate, John does fine with me.
Yeah, I will too, Tuesday, that works.
Jay, Juanita, are you guys good with that?
I'm good with it. I, I also have a question, um, and we'll have all the people that wrote in for public comments and stuff like that, all their information of what their concerns are right now, correct? We'll have all that information.
Councilmember Sarno, this is, this is your city clerk. Uh, the only information that is, um, uh, written down for under, under the, um, uh, minutes are the names of the speakers, contact information. There's no way for the individuals to place their contact in for information, but I know some of them are consultants. So I could obtain that information from our planning department.
No, 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 I'm, I'm.
Jay, just to help that, ju- just to help out. So for Monday, those of you guys who are listening in the audience, you guys can put in a, a, a public comment request to the planning commission. So then we also can see that information because it's public. So there is going to be your comments, you guys write out what you guys are, so then at least it gives us some kind of template to follow, so then when the next meeting, at least we can do our due diligence through our Homer, ask questions, do whatever we have to do with staff later on individually, and then Tuesday we can have the meeting.
Everybody agree? That's, that's good, thank you.
I, I just want to make sure, um, uh, council, council member Trujillo heard that Tuesday morning date, it was that. She was kind of delayed, I don't know if that was okay with her, and we're going to, you know, come get back with you with that.
So could we specify the dates again so that everyone knows on what we intend to do, because council member Trujillo, I'm not sure that she heard everything, Ray.
Yeah, I, I think we're just trying to get a meeting with the, uh, any interested industry group on Tuesday morning, the eleventh. Um, and, and so they can have, um, uh, uh, hear directly of a kind of a meeting that we had a little open forum, um, that's publicly noticed. And so, um, not just industry, anybody who wants to speak can speak, but we know there's some very concerned industry groups that have, um, concerns that they want the council to hear. So we were looking at Tuesday morning for that, we heard four of the five saying that's okay. I, I think it's okay with, um, the councilwoman, but I, I just want to make sure.
Your city manager, this is your city clerk, uh, um, council member Trujillo, uh, just sent me a message that she is available.
Okay, great.
And Ray, this would be Zoom, so we need to let everyone know it's not in person.
It, it's correct, everything's Zoom the next, like I see Juanita's thumbs up, so, um, so yeah, Zoom, and, and I kind of made a declaration this week and next week, all meetings are Zoom, and so that would be a Zoom meeting on, on, next Tuesday.
And once again, just to reiterate to the business community and our, 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 our residential community, if they have any questions and they're listening to this, or they're on this Zoom meeting, just to make sure, make sure you apply your public comment or a template, whatever may be, so we can see it. And of course, you address it to the planning commission, because we can see that, no matter what, we get, we, we have access to that information, so that will help us out.
Have we determined what time? I know we specified it's Tuesday morning. So is someone going, can we decide now on the time?
Uh, maybe nine o'clock? Is everybody good with nine o'clock?
Nine's good with me.
I'm good with that.
And we are classifying this as a study session, is that correct? Or how are we classifying it? Because it will be noticed.
I would call a study session, I'd ask Katya or city clerk if that would be a problem, having this dialogue.
No, I would, I would deem it as a study session, I don't see a problem with, um, we have to notice it and, um, but it would, from what we're discussing, it, it would be another study session.
And then it gives them, uh, the access to be a presenter, and if we can do something that gives them, you know, and a lot of time, ten, fifteen minutes to speak, I mean, whatever may be, that helps them out on the topic issue, so we may have to make sure if somebody else has regular public comments about something that's not, has to do pertaining to the general plan, then of course they get three minutes. But if it has to do everything to do with their, with, with the issues at hand, then they, you know, to have them like a presenter, if that's okay, you know, I think that would help out, uh, the, the council, I, I, that's what I believe, that's what I'm hearing from everyone else.
Yeah, I don't want to, I don't want to have to have somebody have three minutes and then rush and cut them off and not be able to present their concerns in, in the matter of time, so, um, I think that might be a good idea, John, to, uh, make sure that whoever is going to be, uh, speaking is speaking on a matter of uh, concern, not a matter of just public speak.
If I may suggest that we, maybe we should allot a specified amount of time so that everyone has the same time, because I'm thinking if we don't, then some people may go on longer than others and so maybe it's just a good idea to set a, obviously not three minutes, but it pre.
You know, you know, what I would suggest is that today we had a meeting that, um, it was pretty free flowing, people were able to speak what was their concerns, a lot of them were, were, um, similar concerns, and it, it, it didn't drag on. We, you know, we, we had two parts of that meeting on our truck tax, second part on our general plan. And the general plan meeting probably went forty-five minutes, and I think everybody got what they wanted to be said to us, through us, without jumping on each other, people were waiting to hear, and they would bring up some similar cases. So I don't think, you know, it could change, maybe more people will join on this meeting, but for a good number of people, we got, I think we got everybody's major points through, and no one was dominating the time. And if, and if that occurs, we can, you know, the mayor can say, okay, we got to start putting some structure to it. But I think that was, that was good about this afternoon's meeting, it was pretty open, free, and, and I think some people didn't speak, but I think they, they were getting the answers to their questions, because they had very similar concerns.
Okay, so no three minutes, but just be courteous, uh, say what you have to say, and let's get, you know, we'll get to the next person. If they go on too long, then we have to let them know that we're, you know, we have to, um, cut some people off, but I don't think we'll have to do that, I think that they'll be fine, okay?
I, I.
Madam Mayor, if I may, um, I think that's a good idea, maybe not, not necessarily a timeline, but if they're being maybe a little bit redundant, repetitive of the same question, uh, or maybe we could, uh, you know, preempt that before, uh, you know, they start speaking, if it was already heard before. And then my next question is probably to me, the planning also, maybe to our city attorney, is this also a time where their concerns and questions are going to be answered on the spot?
Uh, well, I, I think I answered, and I didn't give answers, I was listening, and I, and I, I heard some points that I didn't think of, and I don't make the decision, the planning commission and the city council do, you don't have to make a decision on the point. I think the main point, they want to be heard, and you heard some of that in, in, um, oral communications tonight, but there's more of them, and there's some other points, and I, I think, you know, no decision will be made. Um, and, but you're here, they're there to listen and understand, so you can make an ultimate decision.
And that's why, John, too, um, i- if, once we hear what they have to say on Tuesday, of course, Monday also, because that's the planning, but once we hear what they have to say on Tuesday, we have the opportunity also, um, to also listen if they need, if we need to talk about it again in another study session, and, and, you know, right before the council meeting, whether we set up a time at five or four-thirty, you know, to have a study session, we can do that again. So this is more just information for us to hear, and then, you know, after that, we don't have to answer any questions. We can go to staff or whoever may be, and, and, you know, even our city attorney, uh, even our city manager, just to ask those questions, our planning director, uh, anybody who has any part with this, we can always ask them the questions after that, you know, during the week. So that, that's just something that we can do too.
Okay, all right, so does, before we adjourn, are there any other questions or feedback that we need to address before we adjourn?
Yes, real quickly, Madam Mayor. So in terms of the comments that will be coming in with respect to the city council session, that would be to, to Janet. Anyone that wants to make comments relative to the planning commission's study session, then that's just the regular process. You send an email to, to Teresa Cavayo. It, it's not any different than any other process that we've done in the past. Janet, did I miss anything?
Yeah, thank you, Wayne, and I also want to add that these, during these, uh, study session, um, I do place it on the language, on the agendas, that public speakers will have a chance to speak only on agenda items. Um, therefore, we won't worry about having speakers, uh, speak about other items that are not on the agenda.
Yes, that's awesome.
Yeah, and lastly, Madam Mayor, I just found a letter from, that we got from the Department of Transportation with respect to the grant, and it states that this is a remind, this is to remind the city of Santa Fe Springs that your grant will expire on February the twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-two. So you were right when you said February the twenty-eighth was the date for it. Thank you very much, everyone, be safe.
Thank you, okay, I would like to adjourn the meeting now, it is, uh, seven-ten. And we'll see you next week.
Good night, everyone.
Good night.
Good night, everybody, take care.